Okay, sounds good. And if I could have a roll call, please?
Sarah Allen?
Here.
John Chartier?
Here.
Melissa Clark? Here, sorry. Mary Ann Dwyer? Mary Ann?
Oh, Mary Ann's muted. Nope, you gotta unmute.
Okay, I see her, okay. Lisa Cavalluna?
Here.
Kevin McClellan?
I don't know, I've not heard.
Okay. Diane Salter?
Here.
Dr. Outlaw?
Here.
Jan Meek?
Here.
Dr. Schmittow? Okay.
Okay, roll call was done. We'll all stand, please, and say the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm looking, and I guess we do have some attendees. Any public comments and questions on agenda business?
Well, Ms. Salter, I don't see anything right now. But for our attendees, if you are interested in addressing the board, just utilize the Q&amp;A feature at the bottom of your screen. Just type in a question. The entire board will be able to see it. And when the time comes, they'll address your questions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dave. And then next on the agenda, I got approval of the consent agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Sarah Allen? John Chartier?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes? Mary Ann Dwyer?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, I have information and discussion items. First, we have the finance report.
Yeah, hi, good evening. A couple things tonight. I know that painting is on the agenda. And since that was put on the agenda on Thursday, we have a different option, John. We talked. The bids came in, their quotes came in a little high for Harvey Swanson. What really needs done, the fifth grade, we moved lockers from Fletcher to the fifth grade wing, and they're in really bad shape. So we would like to go forward for $7,000 and have those painted this summer. And then the other part, the hallways, we, John feels that DM Burr can take care of that. They've done painting for us in the past. And they've been doing their cleaning and their summer cleaning. And we feel that they would have time. So we would have them do that. And then it wouldn't cost us, just the cost of the paint. So otherwise, we were looking at 40,000 or 50,000. And I told John, I don't think we can take that to the board right now. There's, with everything going on, that would be, I don't think that's gonna go well. But there is, you know, an option to at least get the fifth grade lockers painted to clean them up, and then have all the hallways done at Harvey Swanson. And this was requested initially by Debbie Brower, principal over there. She asked if we would consider that. We have kind of their summer wishlist items. And we do this every summer. And I know this is a different summer, so.
And Jan, what you're looking for is just to tell us this, but it's not an action item for today, correct?
Well, I guess looking for feedback, too. You know, with everything going on in the, it's not an action item. You're correct, it's not. We were initially, and we can, you know, forget the whole conversation. We were initially going to ask for permission to take this out to bid. But then we realized the cost was going to be too high. And it just wasn't, wasn't, we have a better plan to accomplish what we, what we think, well, at least hold the building over. Because in all reality, even if there were a bond, we're looking at probably three years from now. By the time there would be one, and then, you know, you have to wait a year to get everything done. So I guess just input, but no action item.
Okay. And then, this was considered one of the items we had for the bond when we had our list of projects, correct?
Well, it was part of the complete renovation at Harvey Swanson, yeah.
You want 7,000 for paint?
Lockers.
Lockers.
Fifth grade lockers, yeah, paint, yeah.
That's a lot of paint.
Don't they spray it on?
Yeah, they do this electrostatic spray method, yeah, yeah.
I personally am not crazy about doing projects if we don't have to.
Okay.
But I know 7,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money. I don't know, what are our other board members thinking? Because again, if we redo, it's gonna be a redo of those lockers also. I just don't wanna put too much money in something that.
And I agree.
I'm not comfortable doing anything until we have more information on what the world looks like, so no.
Okay, and you know what, I'm kind of there, too. But it was already on the agenda. And then I talked to John Friday, and I thought, well, I'll bring it up. So I think.
I agree. I'm with, that's where, again, I just, where I'm, like, I had to speak up and say, I know 7,000 doesn't seem like much, but we got lots going on here.
We have lots going on, we have some bad information I'll get to in a minute here. But I just wanted to let the board know, we're looking at, there's some, in the areas of food service, transportation, and our building readiness, there's a lot going on out there. A big transportation committee on how we might transport kids. More to come on that. Food service is the same thing. If you think about it, the kids at lunch and in the lines. This is a big one, you know, talking to Monica. We're all just keeping our eyes and ears open to what may be suggested or mandated. And then in the area of our buildings, things like our dryers in the bathrooms, those all have to be dismantled because when you do that, it blows, you know, virus potentially in the air. Things like toilet seat covers, we don't have any. And they're suggesting we get some. So what we're doing is putting together a list of either mandated or suggested ways to make the school, you know, safer against the virus. And then we'd like to get with the board. On June 8th, we have a meeting. And if we have a complete list by then, but it could, it could be ongoing throughout the summer. So we're not sure how much we may have to set aside to spend on these types of updates to, that's what we know right now as an example. So in light of that, John was going to kind of limit his, his time with the district after June 30th. We did leave a little budget in there for big projects. But he talked, and he will be working two days a week in July and August because of all these things that we feel are gonna be needed to get the buildings ready. And then one last thing I just wanna throw out there was information late this afternoon. And other districts are looking serious at that. There was a conference, and people from the MDE and throughout the state, they're saying now, there's a chance we may get a proration this year. It could be $600 to $700. I still, maybe I'm in denial. I still can't believe that we would. But in talking to my colleagues in other districts, who just a little while ago have board meetings tonight, they're bringing it up. And they're saying that this could be a possibility. So I don't even know what our final budget would look like on June 8th. We may need to, hopefully, we would have more information. But I would like to discuss more on June 8th. Bringing, you know, do we want, this year, we weren't planning, for 1920, we're not planning any type of a per pupil reduction. That is now on the table, and it could be a big one. So if that's the case, if it were to be $600 or $700, what we're saving and what the loss would be, we would be looking at an operating deficit for the year. I just wanna throw it out there again, this information came through today. There was a big, a conference to kind of, what they said, said unpack Friday's revenue estimating conference. And that's what came from it. So we do have a board meeting between now and the 15th. So I don't, I don't know how you feel about that. I hate all this, everything up in the air thing. But I would like to get a budget through you that I feel is close to what we, to reality.
And my feeling is, is that we should address things as we know it and not delay. Because there's, the more we delay, the worse it could be for us. So we would have to have those figures. Once you get something a little more concrete, because like you say, this is all possible, not for sure.
I know. The problem, I mean, in four weeks from now, you know, the board approves June budgets. And we're just, we're so up in the air and everything. But just as an FYI, we may be looking at a cut this year, which would obviously impact our budget, so.
So at our last, at our work session earlier this month, we set $300 on 100 student loss for our parameters. We'd like to move that to 500 to be concerned for June. There is likely to be something from the feds to help us. So what, the numbers that Jan's talking about is if we did not get federal assistance. But we'd like to move to 500. Is there any concern from the board about doing that?
No, that's, I think, better.
Yeah. And that's for the 2021 year, Matt. And then this, for 1920, that's, we're still waiting. But there's, yeah, we really didn't discuss that at the last meeting, taking a reduction for 1920. Yeah, 500 seems to be the number. I haven't heard any district going less than 500 for next year.
All right, are we, are we good on that?
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Jan, for.
Just informational, and sorry to.
Thank you, Jan.
News.
And if I could, then, I'm just gonna piggyback real quick off of Jan's financial report. Oakland Schools does send their budget, their general budget, to us. And they, they ask for boards to, if they could support it or not, do resolutions. Review of this showed that it was all put together after our financial crisis started. And their stay at, stay home, stay safe executive orders were given. Basically, they're staying with their budget. And it did include pay raises and some new jobs, even though they say they probably won't do it. We felt it was best, you know, my, or I felt also best, that we just stay mute on this in hopes that maybe when Oakland Schools redoes things, that we'll get some additional resources, or at least funding that'll be sent down towards our way, especially to get us through all this mess that's going on right now. So we're gonna stay mute and not make a resolution either way. But I just wanted to put that in. I don't know if anybody's got any comments or concerns? Do you have the education report?
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Diane. Let me just say a couple comments on it. Diane and her team, they've been working on a plan to help some of our students with some of the higher needs, particularly at the elementary level. And the team has been working and discussing and researching and working with the team. And they, Diane's gonna walk us through a proposal that they have to address students, something that we think could really help with both the students that are in need as well as the overall environment of some of our classrooms at the elementary level. So Diane, take it away. Do you wanna pull your screen up? Okay, you're muted.
You're muted.
Okay, here goes the screen. All right, can everyone see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so this has to do with, we give it a title. So it's primarily for elementary students, both at Oakwood and Harvey, and calling it a transition resource room. Because it's still considered a resource room, it would be, it would be supporting students with IEPs. And resource rooms with those students. The purpose of the room is primarily to help students with IEPs who, their team, their IP team has determined that being in the general ed setting a majority of the day is not necessarily supportive enough for them. And it's not really the least restrictive for them, for a variety of reasons. Each student would have a different reason for why this room would be most appropriate for them. Why would we want this kind of setting?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Diane, your screen isn't changing. I apologize to interrupt. But if you wanna go to your enable editing on the top of your PowerPoint, then you'll be able to click and show the slideshow. Sorry.
Did not happen the other day, so. Enable.
It's moving now, it's clicking now, Diane.
Yeah, Diane, in that yellow box at the top, says enable editing, if you just click on that, should be enabled.
I do not have that, but, okay. Let's see if it goes now. All right. Okay, there we go. Okay, so the Y, is it moving now?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So this would provide a local option for students with IEPs who have more, who need more supports and have significantly challenging behaviors, as opposed to sending students out to center programs in the county. And, and as you know, the center programs that we send students to are very costly to our district and to our budget. It also would support students by providing consistent supportive environment, where there's one spot, it's a home base for them. And it would teach students social appropriate behaviors all day long. I mean, that would be their main goal there. It also supports the idea of decreasing distracting and disruptive behaviors in our typical resource rooms for students who are in there for maybe some reading support or math support, or some other modified curriculum, and also our general ed classrooms, which has been an issue for the last couple years, increased issue, distracting or disruptive behaviors in our general ed classrooms. Another reason, recently, in our preschool and our elementary students, we have seen significantly challenging behaviors. More aggression, more destruction and disruption. Students are, that, many of the students that were, that are coming to us have really lack self-regulating behaviors. And it's not just in our district, I want you to know that. This is across the board. And as a preschool director, this is something we talk about. We actually have special people who, from Oakland Schools, who just specialize in behaviors for preschoolers and early childhood children and their behaviors. This would also help us to develop individual student transition plans designed to support students from going from a more supportive special ed setting to a less restrictive mainstream setting in the general ed rooms. When children go to our center programs, they don't have that opportunity. There's no transitioning, there's no same age peers to begin integration with and to support that mainstreaming idea. We also have the ability then to do some reverse mainstreaming where gen ed students could come into the transition room. And we can work on some of those peer relationships and peer behaviors with general ed students. Little more additional information, social skills training with our school social worker or psychologist daily would be desirable. So they have like a 45 minutes to an hour a day that they would work on those social skills. It also affords us that possibility for future students that we could support them and service them locally instead of sending them to center programs. So it's a future potential savings and a least restrictive environment for those students than sending them to center programs run by the county. It would also be housed, the idea that it would be housed at Harvey Swanson because there's more space available there to meet the needs of students. We would use one full-size classroom and then one smaller calm-down room that's nearby. Right now, we have a plan for the fifth grade wing because it's less active and less bodies in there. And then it's close to a restroom that would be able to be used. At this point, the staffing is one full-time teacher. It could be fulfilled by either two teachers sharing that responsibility or one full-time teacher. We would have two classroom assistants. And the idea that they would be reassigned from other classroom assistants from within the district. And then a mental health staff person would be available, hopefully, every day. That, that was the plan from the schedule from within today, this year's present staffing. Okay. Any questions?
And I can only see some board members, so I don't know.
I have a question.
I can get rid of my screen, let's get rid of that. There you go.
I have a question for you, Diane.
Sure.
I know I should know this, but can you remind us all how many students we're looking to serve that would we be, we'd be bringing back from centers?
So before COVID, I'm saying that, before COVID, the plan was to bring two students back in the elementary. And we have two students presently that we would have already designed the room for, who are already in our district. So right now would be four. But with the COVID, people are a little worried about, because we've lost the transition time. Typically, we would transition those students like in April and May. And they would come for, you know, two or three hours a day. And then by September, they would be here full-time. We don't have that, so I can't say that they would show up on September 8th. But certainly, the hope would be that they'd be there within the first quarter. The one student. The other student, I think, is gonna come right away. The transition plan for him was differently, so. So two students coming back. And really, my goal is that we would not be sending students again. We would do our best to keep them there unless they were really, we just couldn't meet their needs. But this would really support being able to meet the needs of the majority of our students.
What's the downside?
Say that again.
What's the downside, if there is any?
I don't see a downside. I think this is, we've, you know, the increase of sending students out is not something that any of us really like doing. But because of the needs of our students recently, we've sent more students out in the last two or three years since I've been here, since we started. And so the increase of our center programs have just really, to me, skyrocketed. I never planned, I mean, I came here and we sent five students out. And we were doing four or five students in center programs for about three or four years. And then recently, this is my eighth year, so, you know, tick up here and tick up there. And now, we just, it's just incredible. We just have, we send out a lot of students that we would like to meet their needs right here locally. And I think we can do that.
If I could add one thing, the cost of the center programs is absolutely spiraling out of control. Kingsley and Montgomery, where those students are coming back from, they're charging like $70,000 tuition a year. Diane, wasn't that like in the 30s, like?
34, I think it was, three years ago.
Yeah, it's, so they're literally pricing everybody out. This is, this is a great move for students. It is good for us to keep our students close to home and everything like that. But it's also, it's very responsible because those center programs are literally pricing everybody out of the market. So that's another side of benefit of doing this.
Do we get special funding? Is that part of the special allocations for, to pay for those students? And then my second question is, do you have to recruit for that position? Or do you already have someone in mind for that?
So we would be staffing that position from someone within our district right now. So that, we're not recruiting for that position at all. And the classroom assistants are from within the district also at this point. There's no extra funding for sending students to center programs. That goes right to our.
We get such a lot of funding in district to pay for those kids at a different level, right?
We get, it's taken from our PA-18 allocation. So Oakland Schools, the PA-18 money comes from the Oakland County Special Ed Millage. So we get maybe a million two a year. And then there's a separate column, what we get. And when the money comes in quarterly. And then there's a deduct from that, from that revenue for the center programs. But it's also used for all special ed in the district. So if we can save money on sending, sending kids to center programs, and it's better for kids, it's a win.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody else got any other questions, concerns? Thank you, Diane. And if I understand this correctly, our kids don't get then on some bus, travel for whatever amount of distance. We now are keeping them right here.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's another one, they're not on a bus for at least an hour. No matter where we send them, it's an hour drive.
Yeah, the only thing is, the Oakwood kids would go to Harvey because we're not gonna have it at both buildings.
Correct. It's a one, one, one building, one district program.
Yeah.
Great, thank you for all the work, thank you on that.
Thank you.
Good job, Diane.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have our action items. And could I get a motion for the approval of a layoff list?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the layoff list as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and could then, discussion, Matt?
Yeah, painful time of year, always difficult to do this. But this is what happens when we have declining enrollment. We have, I'm gonna list off the names. These are professional staff members that are on this layoff list. Want to, before I say this, is that some of this has to do with kindergarten enrollment. Kindergarten enrollment every year rolls in during the summertime. So we have to be cautious. And the, because of COVID, we're hoping that it's just slowed our kindergarten enrollment a little bit. But in the last couple of years, we have ended up laying people off that we have brought back. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to, that our numbers will be such that we're able to bring back. Because we're laying out some really talented people. And it's heartbreaking. I know they've done an amazing job this year. And it's really difficult, these are some difficult layoffs. So I'm gonna list off the names of the professional staff members from Oakwood Elementary, Rosemary Di Ambrosio. From Harvey Swanson, Lauren Mitten. Lauren teaches first grade, Rosemary's a kindergarten teacher. Jennifer's Watzke from special ed at the middle school. Holly Shigley, that's the social worker that we talked about at the last meeting. And Alyssa Ayers. But I believe that Alyssa would be called back to a part-time position at the preschool. I think that's, that's the thought there. And then in the support staff ranks, we have, we actually will only have one person that will be laid off. That person is Darlene Barowski, who was hired at the beginning of this year. She is being bumped because of a reduction of a position. So those are the layoffs that we have that are part of this. We have two more retirement resignations. Alyssa Lyons has announced her retirement from the middle school. And then we had hired a welding teacher. And we were thrilled at it. But due to personal reasons, she has resigned from that position. And it took us an enormous amount of effort to get that person in place. So this is a devastating loss for the district because the skill set is so unique. We are working on that right now, but she is gonna be unable to fill that position. And then we have three vacancies that are on our HR report. Some support within high school band during the marching band season. We have a 1.0 elementary music position that we discussed last month. And that is to be filled. And I know that the elementary folks are working on that. And then the other vacancy is obviously the welding position. So that's the HR report.
And Matt and Jan, and fair to say that really, even if the cuts have to get deeper, we'll know, we won't know anything until the state and the feds all tell us exactly what our funding's gonna be, correct?
Yeah, like we talked, whatever, two weeks ago, we really, it could, it could be August. Because the federal government, if the federal government does not subsidize some of this, then that's when it's going to be really, really bad, so.
The one thing I will say is, from the human resource perspective, tenured teachers would need to receive the layoff notice by April 30th. And our, this is our, this is our group of non-tenured teachers. And there are windows of time unless there is a financial emergency. And so anyway, I just wanted to share that, that this is our layoff list. It's gonna be difficult to add much to this list after this point. So just for what it's worth. This, this is preparing us for deep cuts. That's why this list is a larger list.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion from any other board member?
I mean, I guess I just would like to say, I know we have a lot of parents and staff with us tonight. And I love that, I love that people are engaged in watching this. I think anytime we vote on a layoff list, it is, I mean, you physically feel it, and it's not fun. And a lot of thought and heartbreak goes into it. But I also would like to make sure that people know that a lot of this is because of the funding. And I know a lot of us board members are really truly doing our best to reach out to our political leaders to make sure that we can get as much funding as we can and put pressure on at the state and federal levels so that we don't have to keep having layoff lists or, you know, losing any more valuable employees and that we are working really hard on that. And I, I hope that they know that.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. That's a great point. And I also want to say to these. these community members, if they could also reach out, you know, send me an email. I'll send you our contacts of the, who's the state rep representative and legislators are federal, but absolutely. In fact, I just, my, my email's probably going out tomorrow. I'm just still fine tuning it, but I have all my addresses ready to go. Anybody else, anything?
We're strengthening numbers. So the more emails we send and the louder that we are, you know, it makes a difference. So whoever's listening to this, please help us to get us, you know, the funding like Sarah and Diane said, so.
And you can even do phone calls. If you don't want to type anything out, do a phone call. We have phone numbers.
Yeah, I know. I had a few parents reach out today that asked with verbiage or what the highlights or the points are that they should talk about. And I will gladly help and, and talk to any parent or community member, but the more people that keep reaching out, the better. And I know I sent out quite a few emails today and I'm just going to keep hammering it because, you know, our funding is, is the bottom line of everything and, and I think our staff and our community deserves it.
Absolutely. And I too have, will have some verbiage. I'm just finalizing it because that's, that's the big thing I've been working on. We got to get this out here. You know, this, this is a disaster and it's now not just state, it is our federal representatives also. Usually it's been, let's just contact the state, contact the state, but we need to reach out also to our federal legislators.
If I could just add on this, if there's any place to put your eggs right now, it's in the federal basket. The entire, the state is waiting on the feds to do anything. So the, the federal level is where we need those calls in the short run. The state for sure, but in the short run, those federal contacts is really going to be important for funding because without support from the feds, next year is going to be very challenging for Michigan schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Melissa, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sarah Allen?
Yes.
John Chartier?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Marian Dwyer?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Diane Selter?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next I have on the agenda is citizens input. Dr. Dave, I don't know if you see any?
There are no comments there.
Okay, I want to thank, I'm pleased to say, like Sarah, piggybacking on, we're glad to see that the people are here listening. Some really tough decisions coming up, little bylaws we had to make even today. So with that, I will say the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Bye.